Let's meeting order.
All right, we'll skip the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We've had that, we have roll call.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
President.
Chairman Bunnock?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
Here.
Commissioner Alguier?
Here.
Commissioner Launer?
President.
All right, then do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we move on to our discussion items, and the first item is MERS review.
I sent you last week this email, did you all? Do any of you want a hard copy?
Do you have them available?
Oh, just in case.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's seven. Oh, we'll hold her down.
We're going to have to jump back and forth.
It's easier than. It's in things.
Love the colors.
You have an extra one?
Yes, enough, I'll take it, it's probably easier than the online.
Do you need another one up there?
No, we're good.
We've got a nice old floor.
It's your prerogative.
Okay, so.
I mean, I did see the thing you sent out where we went from eighty-seven to eighty-six.
Correct. So this is the actuarial evaluation report for our county as of December 30th, 2020. I've highlighted some pages that I think will be of interest to you, not to go through every page, and if it's more technical stuff, we certainly can invite Toly Rejenovic, our MERS rep, for the drier portions that we don't really need to discuss or know about today. So, page six of the document, and the page numbers that I'm referring to are in the lower right-hand corner. That shows that as of December 31st, for all of our groups, we were funded at eighty-three percent, which is down a percentage from the end of 2019. So that's where we were at the end of 2020, eighty-three percent funded, which is pretty good. If you look at page seven, there is a chart there in the middle, and if you look at the very end column on the far right where it says no phase in, twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, and it lists the total municipality estimated annual contributions of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six, do you see that? That one? That is the amount that was used for the twenty twenty-one budget. If you move two columns to the left of that, where it says no phase in for twelve thirty-one twenty, that is the approximate, where it shows one million, thirty thousand, nine oh eight, that's an approximate that we're using for budget purposes for the twenty twenty-two budget. Okay?
By budget, I see, okay.
The million.
Lying item throughout every department at the MERS.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So that's where that is now. I think based on some of your questions that you were asking previously, I'm going to flip around on a few pages. If you turn to page nineteen.
You know what, I have, I'm sorry. I'm still on seven.
Okay.
So, nine fifty, what is the difference between those two figures?
The one, the end column was what we used when we were estimating the twenty twenty-one budget, where every department that has employees for MERS.
So that was estimate.
That's the number for the base.
Okay.
Okay? And then the two columns over to the left, the million, thirty thousand, that's what we're using for the twenty twenty-two budget approximately.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Now, if you switch to page nineteen, and this is a flow of valuation assets, and if you look at the third column in from the left, where you see two thousand eleven, one million, one hundred and eighty, two thousand twelve, two fifty, two thousand thirteen, two fifty, all the way down, those are your additional contributions we've made into the MERS system, and this goes back to two thousand eleven. Those total six point five million plus is what we've made into it. Two fourteen, two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we made significant additional payments, so that is a good, a good thing to look at. So, now.
Actually, there was a five-year window there that we really kind of fought on the heat.
Correct. Mm-hmm, yep. And that's good. Their investments are doing, doing pretty well there, so whenever we can do that.
So can I ask you a question at this point?
Absolutely.
Because we are putting this additional funding into the account, we're receiving some sort of a benefit as far as it compounds the interest also in the account, so it's really to our advantage to utilize that to grow our dollars. The question I have is, is it better for us to grow our dollars in the MERS fund, or is it better to grow our dollars in a different fund and then apply it to the MERS fund? You know, like if we were to invest outside of MERS.
It depends on where you want to do your revenue, and John's, I won't speak for him, his position will probably be different than mine.
No, I know, but I'm, what I'm saying is.
I think it's better here because this, this debt that you have is not going to go away. You have to fund this.
No, I don't think you're following me.
Oh.
What I'm saying is, we've, and this is just a question for discussion.
Mm-hmm, right.
We, every year, put a certain dollar amount into MERS. What's the advantage, okay, financially, what's the advantage? Does it lower our payment? Does it provide us an adequate return on that investment? So is it better to put that money into MERS? Or is it better for us to earmark those funds in-house, you might say, invest it in another?
Something that pays more than eighty percent.
Well, I don't know if you're going to find it.
For not.
You know? That's my question.
To hold it out here in something that's gained more interest than with the MERS.
Right. Holding it out here would that offset the benefits by putting it into MERS?
Well.
But the, but the problem with that is, is when you get a board that sees this pot of money and says, oh, well, we can use that, or we can borrow from, just like they do with their social security, they borrow their money and spend it now.
Well, there's a, there's a couple parts to your question, and the first is whenever we make extra payments, we do not make those to reduce our current minimum due. We always make those payments to go to the unfunded liability, and some agencies take those to reduce their current payments. We have never done that because we can make those.
Correct.
I can answer the question as to investing it in a secondary fund that we maintain the cash and...
You're going to speak a little louder into the microphone?
Yes. No, if we were to take those six and a half million dollars and invest those into other securities for interest earning, we would have the benefit of having liquid cash available to us, but the thing is, is we're subject to Public Act 20, which really eliminates a lot of these high-dollar assets you can invest in and get a good return. So, for years like this, and for my tenure here, it's been better to put it into MERS.
That's what I wanted to know. I know there's always that chance, like you say, having a liquid capital, you know? People tend to want to use it for other things.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a bright side, and the problem with boards coming in and out when they start to take it, and we might have known what it was established for five years ago.
Right.
But when the tables turn, oh, there's some money.
Right. So, but I just wanted that on the table so that we were aware that this is really a better place for us to put our money, because we do have that obligation that's not going away.
Correct.
So thank you for that.
So by having, being at eighty-three percent funded, have we gained in our bond rating or our?
We have not been evaluated in nine years, so we've got still the same rating as we did, you know, when we presented that in fourteen or fifteen, when our bond rating increased. But we have, I've not been asked for financials to be reevaluated since then. So I would, I would assume that we are maintaining that.
And what is that rating again?
Double.
So what is a good percentage to be funded at for MERS?
A hundred and one.
Is it?
Well.
For one day.
You know, I wonder.
No, I've heard, though, that you, that you don't need to be funded a hundred percent, so.
I'd say eighty-three percent.
It depends what you're trying to do. Several years ago, some wanted us to look at defined contribution. We are still defined benefit. Some jurisdictions do not do that, some have grandfathered employees in, some have switched to defined contributions, some are also switching back to defined benefit. If it is ever the goal to switch to defined contribution, you're going to have to give this funding level much higher, because you're going to be running two systems.
I always compare it, I always compare it kind of like, if you had social security, which you're running right now, the benefit, defined, that's what you consider the defined benefit, and then let's say, for instance, now, they're also going to give you a defined contribution, so they're contributing, let's say, twenty thousand a year to you, and now they're going to match nine percent of what you put in. So there's still this defined benefit payment that still has to be made to catch you up to be able to get you to retire, and now they're compounding it by adding to, to that. So you always have that liability debt there, so that is going to be here as long as it continues to grow when people retire. But if you pull it, like, let's say, for instance, an example I use most years is Grand Travers County. So they are defined benefit, they changed their defined benefit to a defined contribution. So now all their new hires are being matched at nine percent while they're still paying all their retirees here until they pass or the beneficiary. So you almost have two retirements going at the same time. And so if you're not on top of that, of what it's going to physically actually cost the county, it would be cost prohibitive to be paying nine percent. And then over here, let's say, in some instances, these groups could be as high as twenty-five percent, because you've got more retirees, Michelle's going to get into that, more retirees than active employees. So that's why when I explain about social security, you still have to have somebody feeding that pot to keep continuing to grow, and then you hope it's invested wisely to help that grow as well.
Well, that's what got the county itself of us in trouble, because they had nobody paying into it anymore.
A whole lot of young retirements, like that whole lot of.
Well, and that, that's something that we've been tossing around a little bit, and we'll, we'll talk about in just a few minutes, is our different groups. Page twenty-two, just for reference, and I'm going to go backwards after this, but page twenty-two shows you the percent funded from two thousand six forward. Just, just, just for reference point, you can see it does go higher and lower, but consistently their projections have been pretty close for the return on investment.
When the board decided in two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen to go to a defined benefit adjust down, they had to be eighty percent to do so.
That's, that's true too, I forgot about that.
So for you to be able to negotiate with your contracts to do a different benefit from a B three to a B two, and have an all-inclusive group that the new employees come into, you have to be eighty percent funded to do that.
I thought you had to be higher than that to do that.
Now, if you make a change, you have to pay for that change ahead of time.
Okay.
Because the one question that does come up, I just had a former employee stop by my office two weeks ago and was wondering about cost of living adjustments for retirees. Well, as I do the study on those, we have to pay for what that cost would be upfront. Before, in two thousand, or in nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand one, two, three, four, five, I brought cost of living adjustments, and those did all pass, and then it just stopped. But at that time, you could roll it in, you didn't have to expend the money to cover the future projected expenditure, so that's changed. All right, now.
So now we have to pay for the future projected upfront?
Only if you were to do like a cost of living adjustment, you know, because some, some people draw eighty-six dollars a month, and those people probably haven't had an adjustment at all since two thousand five. In different counties, Grant, I can just, I'll just use Grand Travers as an example, they had certain groups of their MERS who gave up pay increases to buy cost of living. So every year, some of them are just dollar amounts, so go up fifty dollars a year or a certain percentage, but that percentage does not compound, the percentage, kind of like the MIDC, it goes back to the original payment, and that's what's used for the, it will be added on, but it's not based on a compounded. And so certain groups have done that up there, and so they do get a cost of living every year, but we, we have never adopted that here. Okay. So, let's see here.
Are we still on twenty-two?
No, I was just showing you that for reference, I've, I've lost the page.
Before we, before we go there, you know, and, and as Deb mentioned, there for a while we were paying a lot in, and we, we slowed down a little bit, but would it, if we talked budget, would it be good to say we want to be ninety percent funded by 2024 and work toward that?
I don't know how you think you're going to get to that number in such a short time, but I'm all for striving to be in the low nineties as far as funding, but I don't think you're going to get to that number that soon.
Because we jumped, what, two and a half million dollars from nineteen to twenty in our liability?
And I believe when Peacock was here, he, he mentioned to you too that the market has a large, we may put in consistently, but the influx of the market adjusts that number. So we may put in two fifty, but if the market's down, we really only put in one seventy.
Right.
You put in two fifty, and the next month it could be three fifty, it just.
So we're at a higher percentage funded, but we have a higher liability too. So have we added employees, have we had more?
Since two thousand sixteen, you've had approximately twenty, twenty-two retirees. And you've had about just shy of fifty people quit. Doesn't mean that they're, some are not eligible to ever draw against us, some do have their ten years and may be able to draw against us. So if you look at page seventeen, this is a participant summary, and I think a meeting a while ago, you were talking about this. Division number one is a general group, and it is closed. Does it still have employees in it that are active, meaning they're on our payroll? Yes, we have ten active employees in this group. We have seven vested former employees, they're no longer employed with the county. We currently have forty-one retirees or beneficiaries drawing from the suffix. And we have eight employees pending refunds. They could be pending refunds for all different reasons. We are Act eighty-eight, we have been in Act eighty-eight, which means we take in other groups. Once that's adopted by a board, that cannot be switched, and that was adopted.
Nineteen eighty-four.
In nineteen eighty-four. Okay? So, group number two is our POAM, which is also a closed group.
Can anybody have questions on the first?
Oh, I'm sorry, on the first one?
I was just going to say, back up and say what that meant when you said.
The, the covered by Act eighty-eight? So covered by Act eighty-eight means that if another entity has MERS or an equivalent government retirement, your years of service for vesting are, are lowered by the, by the MERS plan. So for instance, if you're a Grand Travers County employee, and you came here, and after a year, you're vested, you're drawing as soon as you leave.
Okay.
If you're a city police officer, it's thirty-three months, if you're.
School system.
School system, those types of things.
Township official.
So some.
Some township officials.
Some entities, I can tell you my experience from when I was at the road commission, they are not Act eighty-eight, so in essence, their liability never grows unless you're there ten years. So for us, depending on who's coming in, you can, it links after a lot of months of employment.
And much like that happened when we took on. Yeah, real stocking.
Yep.
So, that's what you're talking about. And when it says pending refunds.
So that could be somebody that was hired prior to two thousand thirteen and only had five years of service here, they're not yet at the age of sixty, so they can't draw, and they may never receive government credit.
So they just, they're letting it sit there just in case?
Yeah, they get a quarterly or annually statement that tells them they have four hundred and fifty dollars that they've paid into it, and they're not going to cancel that or withdraw it until they have that possibility that they're not going to work for somebody to collect it.
So that person who gets that.
Yes.
Statement monthly or quarterly or whatever.
They're just holding on to it.
They're holding on to it, but they do have the option to say, I want a refund.
Yes, once they refund it, it's, it's nonvoid, so like myself at the road commission, they weren't Act eighty-eight, I had four years' credit. I was not, I knew I was not going back there after I was hired here, so I had to cancel. It even wipes away my service that I was even ever there, and my money that I purchased my four years here. Yep. So it just, yeah, unless you go back to that entity, your, your money's just going to stay there.
So, once we, nineteen eighty-four, they.
They adopted that.
To adopt this, can we change that?
No.
No. That just goes with the territory.
It's, it's not, you can't rescind that.
That was my question.
Yeah, no, it's, it's really clear, I was just looking at that on the website the other day, and that has not changed.
And Michelle's finding this information, she just started already on page thirty-five. If you wanted to keep your two, if you wanted to keep your hand on seventeen and then on thirty-five, on thirty-five, it lists all the program enhancements or changes. So that's where she's going back and forth to say it's either an enhancement or a change to the plan, and that is used all by board resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, only by board resolution.
Bureau can only be changed as correct by you. So anyway, the general group, oh one, is a closed group. There are no new employees that are going into that. The group oh two is POAM, that is also a closed group, and that currently has fourteen active employees, and it has eight vested former employees, which mean they haven't reached the age or the qualifications yet, probably just they haven't reached the age yet to retire. We currently have fourteen drawing, either the retiree or their beneficiary, and we have thirteen pending refunds. Now, number eleven.
I just wanted to add this one, so your POAM employees that are named here, that was named when the contracts at the time were negotiated as a POAM. So way back when, your POAM represented your road deputies and your corrections deputies. Those are the only employees that are in this POAM group. They're either correction deputy or a road deputy.
And they were hired prior to?
Depending on the contract, it's either two thousand eleven or two thousand thirteen.
Right, and so they're closed, so we do not put employees into that group. Next is your non-union group. And this group is also closed. Currently nineteen active employees, three vested former employees, thirty-two retirees and beneficiaries currently drawing, and no pending refunds in this group. Again, this is a closed group, but we'll come back to this, I think this is the group we want to come back to. Number twelve is all new hires. So we currently have sixty active employees in here.
I'm sorry, from what date?
Um, it's very, yeah, it's a page, it's here on page thirty-six. This, the board created on three one of twelve.
Three one of twelve.
Yep.
Yeah, and it was, I think there were some slight changes, weren't there, based on the union contracts?
Yeah, each contract has a different.
Had a slightly different date.
Depends on when they were negotiated.
Yeah.
Approximately the year.
Yep, yep, to match up.
Yeah, we have a cheat sheet for that. Okay, so that was twelve, and then we have COAM, and again, that was named after the union at the time. There are eight active employees in there, zero vested former, and currently ten retirees or beneficiaries, and no pending refunds. This group is also a closed group.
And who's in that group?
Command, road, command, corrections.
Did you say it was closed?
Yes, it's closed. And it's command.
Command, road.
Command, corrections.
I got to.
Yep. And now, this would, so this does as of two thousand twenty represent the eight as active. Now, per your board motion of February of two thousand twenty-one, you have increased two road sergeants. So this will now read in two thousand twenty-one, it will say ten active, and you have reduced the POAM then by two active. So basically, they've gone from POAM to COAM. In, in that case, I was just trying to think, there's one.
You could have.
Play on their hiring date.
I thought you said those were closed, how do you?
They are closed.
They're closed, but not to the current employees.
Whatever, I was going to, for example, let me, I was in COAM group. I promoted under sure, because I was an employee when that group was open, I am allowed to go into group number one.
Eleven. He's allowed to go into eleven.
So employees who are here when those groups are open, if they move to a different position, can go to a closed group, but only employees who are here prior to the being closed.
Okay.
Thank you. And the contracts read that.
So they're kind of closed.
They're kind of closed, they're kind of closed for your any new hire after specific date in the contract, yes, but if you were hired prior to that, you get to move about.
Okay.
And we would have, if, people can be vested and leave but not be drawing. So if everything stayed the course, and people were to leave perhaps at their earliest draw date, drawing on their MERS, not just being independent, you're looking, and I can tell you this for probably all the groups, at this group with no promotions, let's just say there were none, for, for whatever reason, you're looking at having active employees in this, this particular, in Agency twenty till probably the year twenty thirty-seven, potentially, if no one moves, moves on to a different job. And so, the one I wanted to draw your attention to, and this is what we've been discussing a little bit, is our division eleven. You've got nineteen people in there. And.
We're twenty now, is it twenty now?
I'm on page seventeen.
Oh, no, we lost Steve, so.
Well, and this is, we're just, remember, we're just, I'm just dealing with everything as of year ending twenty twenty. You're looking at potentially one person, or one, I'm going to say person, I'm not going to say names, okay, that a projected retirement date would be eleven one of two thousand thirty-one. Another twenty thirty, one twenty twenty-seven, one twenty twenty-four. Everyone else in that group, and I'm not saying that they would, but they have the potential, some of them next month, some of them one one of twenty-two. Within that, within that group, when you look at that number. And the reason we talk about that and have been talking about it, and I'm not sure it has to be done this year yet when we look at the 22 budget, we want to think about how we're funding these. And if we want to go in our MERS line item, well, we have to start going back in history and looking and pulling the people that are drawing their, our MERS and start charging them back to the department they retired from. Because if you only have, if, let's say, in this particular Division 11, or no, I'm sorry, you have 19 active employees.
There are 16 that can retire.
If you had 16 people pull out from that once, at once, those three people that are still here and those couple of departments, it would really tip the scales of your budgeting process to put that burden on those couple of offices to try to do this. So, it may be something worth looking at in the future, just to kind of level it. I mean, or we set up something where we just have a retirement. We charge current to our departments. Do you see what I'm saying? To try to balance that as you pull more people out, when you just have one or two left, you're creating a pretty big burden for those departments, especially if the board is of the mindset and we're very cautious about this, "We want you to reduce your budget by 10%." Okay, when you look at a department's bottom line, the department heads or elected officials cannot always cut their budget by 10% because there's too many costs contained that they're not controlling. They're not controlling the staffing levels, they're not controlling the health insurance costs, the short-term, long-term disability, the retirement. So, what they're, what they are controlling could really cripple them in their operation, from an operational standpoint. So, I just think it's something internally, we're just going to be talking about and probably bringing back to you as we can get some better numbers to show you. And it's not something in the past we've ever talked about, but I think as you look at some of these, it might be worth a discussion because I don't think it's there to necessarily overburden any one department.
You're saying build in these legacy costs into operations instead of having it as additional payments?
No, no, it's still doing additional payments.
What it means is, so for right now, when we have the 10 general employees, those 10 general are the only active employees that we can use in a closed group for salaries. So, let's say, I can go back, I didn't bring my calculator, but in 2021, your rates that are being used, what page was that, you had the phased in? Okay, so, the general group on the phase in is 12,789 a month. You multiply that by 12, you divide it by those 10 people's salaries. If I was to look it up, I'm guessing in the staffing levels, the price is close to 20 to 27%. As that number goes to nine and then eight, that percentage is going to increase because you're still trying to maintain that group. So, one thing that Michelle and I have been discussing is, I had talked with Dean Bott a couple of years ago about how they did this because they went from defined benefits to defined contribution. So, how do you allocate that DB for people that have left and you've got your new contribution for your new employees? And he said that they use their, they use their census. And so, if there was seven district court employees that were on the defined benefit, that cost is allocated to district court, circuit court, 10. Accounting or finance, three, you know? So, then that way, you didn't have, let's say, the law enforcement center who has all 10 employees getting charged that full amount. So, you go back and you do your history. It'd be more work on finance because now you're going to pool all 276 of these instead of 111.
And we're seeing that because when we get our, our monthly billings from Grand Travers, we are seeing where they are billing us the retirement because at one point, our district court employees were Lillenaw County employees before they were transferred to Grand Travers. But we still have those costs because this is a guaranteed benefit. And so, we see current percentage allocation based on caseload and then we also, in some cases, see full cost depending on who that retiree was. If this was 100% of their.
Yeah, and what they do there is like, let's say, for instance, if our number is 719, then they have 719001. So, it pointed off who was active and then who was already retired. So, you knew what your cost was for those that had already left, you know? But you had to somehow pay the bill. So, and Michelle and I, in discussing that, we've also talked, okay, so if you cost allocate, what your active is, and then let's just say in the general fund, you have this number that's everybody else and that's your makeup so that you don't have 37 in one department, 12 in another. Some departments could be all new. Let's say, for instance, in construction code, she doesn't have an employee that's outside that 12. So, her retirement is 7.67, that's it. Because everybody has basically essentially retired and they're all in your new group. But in, let's say, the clerk's office, there's two of us that are in this 25 and then the other that are in 7 because they're all in that. So, it's a, it's a larger spread. So, that's where the culmination for 2023 is probably going to have to be looked at after the retirement of 2022, from 21 to 22, to see how you want to allocate this.
So, as, looking at this 11, we, it went for a day down to 18, but then Jim moved in, so it stayed at 19, closer employee.
But then someone else, I think, moved out.
Nancy did, Nancy Benham retired.
Oh, and Nancy was, and then she, so now it's probably 18.
Are we talking about 11?
Yeah.
But, so like, say, we're going to replace Nancy, would she then go into 12?
Yes.
So, that's, that's the class where it's going to really show it how lopsided.
Right, so we're showing more new than, 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 that have been your longer, correct?
But that's taking care of itself because it is a lower.
Interest, it's a, it's a lower rate.
It's a lower rate, it's a lower benefit too.
So, for budgeting.
For budgeting purposes, right now, we take the active closed groups. I multiply, I take how much their salaries are for the year, divide it by 12 to figure out how much we need to allocate and then make that percentage. So, if you, if it's 12,000 a year or 12,000 a month and it's 120,000, but let's say I have 300,000 in, or 400,000 in salaries that we report every month, then I take that and I get that percentage. And that's what we then plug into this next year's budget. So, for instance, if you were to go to your staffing level now, you'll see in the sheriff's department, there will be different allocations.
I'm going to go back Ted because Ted told me we couldn't do it. But I just plugged in a bunch of numbers and I think if we could come up with 1.2 million dollars for the next two years, we'd hit that goal. If we could pay an extra 1.2. I bet it might be feasible.
Well, the only reason I say that is because the draw, we don't know, right?
Right.
It's the draw.
But we got to shoot for something and.
It's not, it's not a bad goal. It is not a bad goal.
No, it's not.
Well, I guess what I don't understand is, is how do we, how do we get, how come, how did we get so that we're not paying enough in, that we're falling under 100%?
It's because when this was set up, your payments were always based on 25 years. They're always based on, oh, you don't pay your actual amount. And then as more people start drawing.
Then it starts dropping down.
Right, you were, you can go back to, well, it started in.
So, why don't we allocate more to, you know, than we are now so that it could add, we don't have to do the special things, but it's actually covering it plus some?
I mean, you could, we could, but you could budget that into it, that each month that I add, we add, excuse me, we add a specific amount. The situation has been that in the last three years, you've dumped 3.1 million into a roof and, and the building. So, you haven't had the equity in the cash to go ahead and make more than 250 or 350 into this right now. And I think Chuck still wants to talk to you about during this budget process, if you're going to go through with the piping in here.
Right.
So, I think you're, you know, if you want to have a long-term, you know, like you're saying, in how many years that you have these CIP projects or, you know, that you want to do, you have to have funds.
Can't have your kid, you need it too with fixed income.
Yeah, I know we, we're talking, but I'm talking about over general, overall. Why shouldn't, why wouldn't this be paying enough that it's covering at 100%?
So, what happens is, is you have your market variable that's in there as well, but you also do have, this is based on an actuarial, when MERS puts your liability out there, let's say 10 years ago, they were basing it on 4% raises. There hasn't been a 3.5% raise here in more than over 10 years. So, when they look at that, they're saying that even though you're only maybe giving a 2%, they're saying 4% is what they use. So, they're, even though, so they're projecting this out that this is what you're going to have to pay by the time the person either reaches 55 or 60. And when you come in, if a 10-year vesting, they're not really going to start to look at those numbers until the 10th, till that 10th year. But you may have somebody that comes in that is vested. And so, now that calculation is seven years sooner and you start paying. Or someone that was going to stay till they were 60 or 62 leaves at 55.
And they can do that in some way, because the new group, they can act.
Right.
At 60, some of them are 50, 25, 50.
So, the census that we have in, in the office that we can look at can generate and tell us, like she's able to tell you, your last POAM could be in 2037. So, that's the, the last employee, meaning part that people can meet sooner.
That's, that's the earliest.
Oh, earliest, I thought it was longest.
Okay, it could be longer, but.
Yes, it could be longer.
Right, it's just, that's why we wouldn't even tell you. I was asking Commissioner Rushton last week a couple of questions. That's why I would never presume to even tell you, nor would I even share. What, they have examples of what people may draw. There are about eight or nine different choices that a person has as to how they want to take their MERS. And so, it's always going to fluctuate.
Different payment schedule. As well as up until just these last couple of years, did MERS actually come to the reality of having a 7.35 percentage? Otherwise, they were using in prior years, eight, nine, that they reported to return. And I think in one year, it was a negative, if I remember correctly. I mean, I have to go back to my, they actually, but, you know, it's the history. So, you have your, just like any market flow at the Treasury Office, you see your ups and your downs, you know, like interest, it just is.
We're never going to see a perfect.
I know, I got that.
You're never going to be, you'll be 100% funded for.
A moment.
Yeah.
But we need a formula to work on some of those closed groups.
Well, we're tossing around and we would, it's nothing we would ever spring on you. We'd come to the board, we'd just like to play with it internally before we, we come. But I think it's just something because when you see those dollar amounts and you see the MERS in some departments, it's higher than others and these are what drives those costs. So, I just think those were some of the highlights that you were interested in that we had briefly talked about. Page 35, 36, those just show you different per group when different things have occurred by date.
The list gives us plenty to look at. Were there any other questions?
You can certainly email or call me if you have any questions. If I don't know the answer, I certainly will find it out. And, you know, we can come back for another budget meeting if any of you want more, more info on it.
All right.
Is that okay?
Thank you. So, then a little bit, I'll review a little bit of overtime.
Sure. Okay.
It takes a little while to get your head wrapped around.
It does.
And I'll share it to the new commissioners.
Thank you.
And I don't know if there's the nitty gritty in there, I don't know that you want to get bogged down. We could always, like you said, if you ever want, a MERS rep is happy to come and talk to you to go over it more in detail, I'm just not sure that.
Yeah, I had suggested that we put the overtime on the agenda. And I could speak to what I was looking for when I did that. We've heard occasionally that some departments have too much overtime or we hear that there are staffing needs. It just seems to me that the starting place is to look at history overtime of which departments have no overtime requests and then which ones are spending lots of overtime dollars. And that ought to help us make some decisions when we get into looking at personnel requests. And we also, I'd be interested in seeing if we're managing the overtime in a responsible way. So, that's why I asked for this on there.
Okay. So, the type of employees we have here are, we have 10-hour a week, 17 and 1/2, 20, 21, 28, 35, 37 and 1/2, and 40. All the positions are covered either by a union contract or a non-union contract. Then we also have our salaried employees and we have our elected officials. Those salaried people, of course, there is not an overtime issue there. They're required to work to get the job done. Elected officials, elected officials meaning the sheriff, the prosecutor, the treasurer, the clerk, the register of deeds, and the drain commissioner. Those are the only six people in the system that are exempt from turning in timesheets. Those six positions are paid 1/26 of their pay every pay. Their W-2s must balance with the approved salary set out by the Board of Commissioners. Our department heads are paid, they work to, they get paid, work to, get paid. And they do turn in timesheets. They have, Chuck has a new form, he updated a few years ago. They don't mark when they're coming in and when they're out, but it's if they use vacation, like if they're present or if they have to have a death legal or a vacation, we have to keep track of that personal days. Now, for. Okay, let's see here. On a 17 and 1/2 hour employee in a week, we would have to look to see if they work 20 hours in that week and their department had signs off on it, that extra 2 and 1/2 hours is going to be charged to overtime. Not overtime of what you're thinking as time and a half, but straight overtime. But it is all included in the 702 line item. It would be the same if a 21-hour employee works beyond that 21, it is a straight overtime, 28. It's the same thing. Now, we need to look though when we're looking at these employees and their timesheets, and I have these in no specific order. If we're looking at our FOPLC, we have three of those contracts and POAM. And Jen, correct me if I misstate anything here. For those, those contracts, it is accredited bi-weekly 80 hours. So, in those, those positions, you do not physically need to work the 80 hours. And when I say you don't need to physically work the 80 hours, what it means is vacation, personal time, holiday count towards the 80 credited hours that is in their union contract.
And comp.
Uh-huh.
And comp, comp time.
And comp, and also for this, these particular ones, also comp time. So, that's how that is and that is different than some of the others. But that's FOPLC and the POAM. Now, and we'll come, we can come back to comp time. 911 for their unionized people, again, 80 hours bi-weekly credited except for comp time. They also maintain comp banks in there. And I believe in the first four contracts I mentioned, the comp time is an internal policy. But in 911, I believe comp is, isn't that in their union contract? But in 911, I believe comp is, isn't that in their union contract, or is that internal also?
It's a.
It's internal, but the comp time in this one does not count towards credited hours to earn time and a half. Okay?
Can I have a question about the comp time?
Yes.
Comp time is usually credit for hours worked.
So.
So, so if they worked over 40 hours, then anytime after that is comp time?
All right, so in the comp time, which you'll see on the sheets, comp time, when it is earned, it is for hours over that would have been paid out is overtime.
Okay.
When it's put into the bank, so if I, I worked my 80 hours under one of these groups, and I worked 88, and I wanted eight hours to go to my comp bank, it's going to the comp bank as 12 hours.
Oh, that's okay.
Because we're front-loading the time and a half. And in these particular cases, although it is time and a half, it's coming through under your 703 as regular wages. So it's buffering your true overtime cost.
That's what I, I was wondering.
Instead of paying it out at the time of expenditure.
So you're, they're actually getting paid time and a half, but it's not looking like time, overtime.
They're getting paid straight time, but the hours were put in at time and a half. And I don't want to be some, play semantics with you, but it's not showing up under that specific line item. And you.
Michelle, there's a question.
I'm sorry.
I can help you here, too. So it is right, it does buffer the overtime. I can tell you, but it's policy and not contractual.
Correct.
Technically, we do not follow federal labor law when it comes to comp time. So when they go to use the comp time, they cannot use it just whenever they want. They can only use comp time if and when it does not create any additional overtime. But we have minimum staffing of two deputies. There are three deputies on, one of them can use comp time at that time of moment. If it creates overtime, it's never approved. So the comp never filters on itself to make additional overtime. It's very confusing, but we've had it for new experiences now.
Okay.
Okay, so, so those are internal policies, and he is correct about we're not really following.
Correct.
There is a philosophical.
Policy and not contractual.
There is a philosophical difference that, that probably rests with the board on comp time, because when you do have these comp time banks, and if you were to pay them out at overtime, so I earn 10 hours of overtime, but I have the ability to comp it and I earn it, let's just say in November of 2020, but I don't take my comp time till 2021. I've earned it at one rate and being paid out at another. But be as may, I'm just using this for my illustration purposes, not to.
Because you don't file by the way.
Yep.
So is it the employee's choice to either get paid time and a half or take comp time?
Well, it depends on the department. So in, in the case that, that the undersheriff's referring to, they do have a balanced bank, as does 911, of 48 hours. They can't get above 48, even if they ask for comp time, and if they are at that threshold of 48 hours, Johanna, or who's ever doing payroll, and it's usually Johanna, we will call them and say, we will not put it into the comp bank because we can't exceed that level. It used to be 40, it was raised up to 48, I think it would be during COVID.
On their timesheets, there's a column that says when they've earned the overtime, if they want to mark it in a pay slot or a comp slot. And then, so if they comp, let's say they had five hours of overtime, and they put that in the, in the comp, then we're going to multiply that by one and a half, and they've earned that to their bank, and we adjust their bank.
So let me ask you a question in regards to that, if I may.
Yes.
You've got an employee at the end of the year, they've got 20 hours in comp time, let's say, that they have not used. Does that roll till the next year?
Yes, and it's reported on your audit as a debt.
Okay, and how, how long can it roll?
It can roll till they retire.
And when they retire, we would pay it out.
It's a liability at that moment, it's paid out at the retirement.
Okay.
It's a liability at that moment.
And it's paid at that rate of paying for that year.
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
Or they could take, leave a month early.
I'm sorry, what?
Or they could leave a month early, or two months early, or three months early.
If their elected official or department had agreed to that arrangement.
Which has happened.
Many have come to me and asked if I would like to help them achieve their retirement goals.
Calculate their date by using all their current time counts included.
With permission by the department head and the elected official.
You have last day's work in person, last day's work on paper.
Correct.
There are tunnel leaves, per se.
But it is up to the department head, because the department head could say, you've given me two weeks, your banks will be paid out after your last paycheck. So it's all with what in the department can do within their means of their, their staffing.
So then when we get to the teamsters and the non-union, for them to achieve, so I explained to you how we get some of the straight overtime, and that's what we call straight overtime. To get to time and a half for our non-union and our teamsters employees, they must physically work 40 hours. They can't be on a vacation day and have that count to their 40 hours. So a, a great example is November elections, especially if Veterans Day, the staff always gets bummed if Veterans Day falls on the same day as election. So on Tuesday, they might put in 14 hours, which would normally get them time and a half, but if Veterans Day is the next day, and that's seven hours, well, then they just lost seven hours towards that time, towards earning overtime, because that's not going to count towards that time and a half pay. So we always look at what union contract, what classification of the position. So a lot of it in this building is, is a lot of it straight work time, it's not time and a half then, okay.
So, okay, so if they get paid for Veterans Day.
They do.
So then how do you, how do they get paid for that extra four hours?
They get paid at straight overtime.
Okay.
It still goes into that overtime line item, but in the reports that Michelle paid you, that's where you have your pay code three as a regular overtime, and a pay code four is time and a half. So we differentiate.
So, some offices now, did she answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So some offices, you may not see overtime, but they're flexing their hours. Because one, they might not have asked for overtime in their budget, for whatever reason, or they just allow flexing within their office.
Which means what?
It means that I need Friday off, which is a seven-hour day, I'm going to put in my 35 hours Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I'm going to flex on Friday, which means I'm not burning a vacation day, I'm not burning a personal day. Or maybe I need to leave work three hours earlier, or maybe let's just, something else kept us in the office that we had to work nine hours one day. We would normally pay that two hours out, but instead, they might short one of the other days to a five, and therefore, they're not putting in their straight overtime. I, I tried flexing, it doesn't work, I pay, I pay. I can't flex, I can't comp, so you've got to have time to take the time off.
Right, that, that has to be approved by the department head or the elected official.
The elected official, the department head, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So, yeah, and, and when we're looking at overtime just in budgets, and if you see increases, and because the undersheriff is here, I'll pick on him and me.
This year is a perfect example.
It's a perfect example, because when you're, when, when you look at these overtimes, you may see, wow, that seems a lot, but then you also need to go back and look at what's in the 703 for regular staffing. Because if your staffing is not at maximum and you're below, and whether it be family medical leave, or retirements, or just new jobs, someone's got to get the work done. So it's driving your overtime costs, but your salaries for your hourly people are coming in much below.
And this year, for us, we have minimum staffing, and in 24/7/365, we have two deputies on the minimum, period. We were down four people at 1.2 million this year, and we replaced all four of those bodies with new hires. However, it takes four months to time that.
Right.
For those four months, they don't count towards minimum staffing. We are still paying overtime to meet minimum staffing standards, even though there may be three deputies working. That training does not count.
And that's why we're not looking at, because Jim and I have had a couple.
The overtime budget for the, for the law enforcement division this year was gone in July.
And are we concerned now?
And we were so short-staffed, historically, it's never happened.
And that's why we're not, we, we watch those trends, and that's why we don't always get concerned, because we know that there's an overage here, we can see what the dynamic is that's causing that to be.
We didn't have to raise the sheriff's office for more than a year, we shouldn't have these new staff divisions we have this year. All of those employees will be trained, they will comp, they will have usual, you have to account for vacation, you have to account for taxes, you know, those kind of things, you can tell they have complaints that come in late court. That's where we step up.
Well, and you never know when people are just going to decide to leave, I mean, for whatever the reason may be.
So we have, aren't you sure it left two months left over there? We have some retirements?
Yeah.
Scott Pejant retired. Steve Bailey resigned. Obviously, Bob Bailey has passed away. Speed Morgan retired. As Boeing started life, February, February of '20 was the Boeing.
And retired.
So we had five or six departures, which goes right back to the pension. I started 23 years ago, only maybe two people in the sheriff's office who are retired. Now, 23 years later, we have probably 20 people retired. We still have X amount of bodies working, but you have 20 more people who come. That's why the pensions continue to.
Yeah, like I said earlier, approximately 22 retirees and shy 50 quits. Our, our payroll hasn't really gone on, it's just a movement and it's a trend, you know.
Michelle and I talked, we talked with, you know, private sector, I had a couple conversations with private sector, and even with COVID, people are having a hard time keeping people for more than two years. That they're just, that's the trend, you come in, you come to work for two years, and then you move on to something else, you just don't, there's no longevity anymore, no one stays. And I, not that Jim can attest to that, but he said that they've had a few corrections officers that they come, they last a year or two, and then they move on.
We have three on the horizon right now, we'll need to go on to the next.
Yeah, and they're not 10 years, they're just looking for something else to do, you know.
But you also have to factor in up here, we got the good retirement, we're down in Grand Chatham, there's no loyalty anymore.
Which makes a difference, but.
But they, they're staying here longer than they are most places.
Correct, that's correct.
They are, but sometimes they're getting to the 10 years, and then they're going to the higher.
I have a question for you, and, and, and maybe for John and, and Jim as well. With several different elected officials, several different department heads, several different contracts, and a whole lot of departments that have different levels of overtime, is this an employee issue? Are there concerns, are there concerns across departments? Does it cause bad feelings? Is, is it a, is it an issue, a, a labor issue?
If I ask you that question, the answer is no. I mean, we, we are, have a different operation than dispatch. We have a different operation. Maybe it all varies, and there's pluses and minuses of everything, no, I don't think it's a labor issue. But the staffing issue and finding qualified bodies is an everybody issue. That's not.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean that kind of staffing issue, I meant, does it cause hard feelings or difficulties in management?
Not in management, no one can, from my point of view, when contract time comes, yes, it does cause some animosities and some hardships, but nothing is remarkable, I mean, small.
Commissioner Luck.
Can I, can I ask?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because I, I, I heard, but I didn't hear from John.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
Can I ask John that same question?
I have not had any staffing issues with.
You don't see it as an issue that some departments are having more or less overtime?
No, I mean, we just focus on our own department and.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luck.
Something that Jim said concerned me, so if you have potential deputies thinking of moving on, that's what I get it, that you're saying, are they moving on to other departments or potentially other careers?
One who has tender resignation potentially affected Friday is going to a different career.
Why don't you say the last, I want, I'm thinking of three, but maybe I'm combining departments, the last three or four, some of them have actually gone to a different career.
Yeah.
Two, two more. One is supposedly gone Friday.
Okay.
He is leaving to go work in a different field completely altogether. One is in the process of going to state police. And there is a third one that I've just heard of, but we don't have anything official on that, who also may be looking to go to a different field altogether. Overall, just correct.
Okay, that, well.
Steve changed careers, though, didn't he?
Steve Bailey changed careers.
Changed careers.
Yes.
Exactly. From that, obviously, something else.
You see?
Well, that's, that is not, it, it can create some budget issues for us, so I realize it's not really budget.
Most of those leaves, the first gentleman who was gone Friday, it's paid, completely pays. Actually, this, this, all of them are paid, when they leave, it's paid.
Nationally, it's not just, well, and it could be related to pay, I mean, it's just that we're losing law enforcement officers left and right because.
We are, are the ones who, the six we lost in the last year, the only one that lost that we left because of the job, I'd say, would be Steve Bailey. Everyone else with retirement and or just moving on.
I was just hoping we wouldn't see that in Lehigh County, you know, we've been so fortunate up here, and, you know, I know they're leaving big roads in big cities, because they're being.
Apparently, it's the same reasons, whether it's financial.
I do, I do think that is one of the topics that the administrator wanted to be here to discuss with you as we go into, because we are going to be going into contract negotiations, and it is something I know he wanted to have further discussion with you on.
We should probably move it to that.
Yeah.
So then they're saying basically that they can make more money somewhere else.
Right, I, I, for an example, the city of Musqueam could not find police officers. This hasn't went totally public yet, but anyone's.
But it's not just pays respect, that was where I was going, it's respect, there's no respect for officers.
The city of Musqueam, they literally doubled their pay rate for police officers.
Yep, they can't get them because of.
It's, it's, it's universal, it's not, it's not, all the counties are struggling, whether it's law enforcement, or equalization, or clerks, or register of deeds, if you talk to them throughout the state, they are not getting people, I talked to Tuscola County just about two weeks ago, she went to the local bank because she had an opening to recruit some people that would have the qualifications to come in. They're not getting the people to apply.
That's what I did.
On the other hand, if you do public service, you don't make a lot of money every month, it doesn't hold up anymore.
On the other hand.
You don't let the people in, it's the money that does. That is a great, love it, but it's not.
And our housing is so expensive here, they can't afford to live here. That's a big deal, that people can't afford to live here.
But I, I do know Chet really wanted to be part of that, if it's.
You can move around, so I couldn't bring it back.
Yeah.
Another day.
Yeah, I do, I do think then we should move on to the vehicle request.
If, if there's something more on that these two topics, though, you want to know about, email me or call me, and then I can do some prep work and bring it back to you. I mean, we can shoot from the hip, too, but then that way I can share it with all of you, something you want to study and look at.
So I'm just, just wondering, for all, I appreciate all this information, thank you. So if we're in a category, somebody's a 28-hour employee and they're working more hours, if we didn't call it overtime, we had a different term.
Well, it'd be straight overtime, and we can, we can suffix that off, and when we get more into the budgets, I think that's an appropriate time to get some guidance from you. It's not something that I'm looking for a decision from you today, on, because it's how, how detailed do you want, we can as detailed as you want, but then you come down, do you want a line item for highlighters, or a hot line item for pens? I mean, I know that's an extreme, but we certainly, I, I think.
But if it was, if it was labeled differently.
Sure.
We wouldn't be seeing dollar signs, we would know it's straight time. So I don't know, call it something different.
It, it's, it's worth a thought, it's certainly not outside of the stuff that we can't do. I mean, we can produce the information for you, it's just a matter of. I mean, we can produce the information for you, it's just a matter of, do you want that broken down on your reports and that type of detail? I mean-
I think the question that we might have to ask is that the people that are in the positions that only work certain hours, I guess the more relevant question might be is how much overtime at straight pay are they getting? What is, and the department heads would know if they need to increase those hours to, instead of ten hours, it should be fifteen hours.
Well, what's the reason that's driving it? Do you have someone on FMLA for twelve weeks and therefore they have to do it? Is it, is it a pattern of not allowing enough hours for that position?
Is it inconsistent?
Because the benefits are prorated based on that position. So, you know, you'd want to delve into what is driving it. Maybe it's just certain times of the year when there's, I don't know, the fair going on or whatever, but anyway.
And I guess what I'm saying is, don't call it overtime, call it extra straight time.
Well, we can always produce those reports if we have a question.
Because it's not overtime, they're not getting time and a half.
Well, we'll leave that up to the department heads. All right, so we have three vehicles.
Maybe I should say that.
Commissioner, please.
Would you talk to us, call it that.
Okay.
Can we move on to the next subject, please?
Sure.
So we're, we're on to the vehicles requests for different departments. We have three for the sheriff's department. Any questions about those?
Keeps us on our rotation.
I believe one of those is for-
It's three regular cars, but one will become the K nine car, yes.
Right, okay. That's what it was. So the old K nine car?
Will be sold.
Okay.
The equipment will come out, it's no longer serviceable, it's been in service for the last eight years. We've moved it through its original car, it's in its second car. Can only remodel and rehab that stuff so much before it's no good. So that has led to an increase in this year's budget request because the K nine cars are more expensive now just than the regular patrol car. For temp gauges and door poppers and-
They had, yeah, the door poppers?
Yep, there's door, there has been a door popper since day one. The new system is a door popper, there's also a temperature gauge. So at any given time, they can look on their belt and see what the temp is in the car. And if it falls below a certain point, the car will automatically start, turn on the air, turn on the heat, whatever it needs to do.
Your parents get that for their children in their labor car?
Probably could, I don't see why it wouldn't be universal, yes.
So does the, the funds for, for the extra things for that car, does that come out of the vehicle or does that come out of the K nine fund?
Right now, it's budgeted as motor pool his, well, historically. Eight years ago, two thousand thirteen, we did this, it did come from motor pool too, I believe.
Because I always thought that extra things for the, for the K nine was, came out of the K nine fund.
I can tell you, training, equipment, medical bills, that things of nature, do come out of the K nine fund.
But this is kind of a capital.
This is for the vehicle.
Correct.
Right.
Any K nine vehicle expenses are a motor pool fund, if that's what the question is.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, so I guess, that's, I was noticing that here. Because that's what I thought they said, the dog wouldn't cost the county anything. That's what I remember.
I can go back and look in thirteen, but typically when we capitalize the vehicle, it would all be, I don't remember moving the money into the motor pool to do that.
Yeah, okay. That was my only question, were there any other questions about them?
Well, do we want to discuss whether we want to buy additional?
Yeah, well, that, that's, yes, that's a good-
I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea because on average, what will an officer go in and slide in and out of that vehicle a day or shift or whatever? Depending on how we stop thinking-
Minimum, probably thirty. That's probably low.
I understand that there's a little bit of opposition, opposition for the seat covers. Do you know what that reasoning is?
The sheriff is opposed to it, I do not know the exact reasoning, other than-
Is it a safety issue? Is it somehow that the weapon may get tangled up in the seat?
I don't know exactly.
Can you get back to us on that?
I can, absolutely.
I would like to know if it's a safety issue.
To my knowledge, no, it's not. I think it's more of the, his cars, he'll determine what goes in there.
Okay, is it, the airbags still go off, right?
Correct, these should not affect, based on my knowledge and our research, no, it shouldn't affect it at all. I, I understand what Laurel's trying to do there, I agree, I've seen the seats, some of them are in rough, rough shape. I mean, even the cars, I'm sure that Amber's group has some of our old cars that they are looking to turn around. I'm sure some of those seats and interior of those cars are tired, but they've been on the road for eight to ten years as a public service car, so they're-
My other question was, is there any possibility hearing from some other departments that have used these or-
I can contact the company, just so, you know, I didn't want to spend too much time, because I wanted, I thought if I brought this to you, you could determine if you want to go further with this. So I did a simple Google search, I did Ford Explorer seat covers. And this was the first company that popped up that was tailored specifically to law enforcement agencies and first responders. And I can certainly reach out to them to see if there's any kind of testimonial or-
Yeah, that's what I thought, I'll see.
Yeah.
Or if they could get a company, a place that has them already and call them.
Exactly.
Because the company will tell you, the good ones, but if they have some place.
And I know over the last, say, six to eight years, I can think of two occasions where we've actually had seats repaired. Because they've ripped or gotten torn and they were well early in the service life. It's not a warranty issue, so we had to get them fixed before they really fell apart.
I would appreciate looking into them more myself.
Well, the other question is, you know, we're auctioning these cars now, selling these cars off in a different way. And if by maintaining the seats, if we can bring in a little bit more dollars for the sale of the vehicle, that will actually put money back into the motor pool fund, increase that motor pool fund. Yes, we're taking some of it away, I believe it'll come out of that fund. But is it going to allow us to put maybe more money back into the fund? So, but if it's a safety issue, then for me, it's not a big deal.
To my knowledge, like I said, it isn't. I mean, if it went through this year, I would just probably write that in as part of the overall budget from here on out. You know, Laurel and I had talked about this, and you're right, it is an issue. People will come look at the cars and if it's got good seats, they don't care if the motor's blown, they want that one over the-
They want to look good in their car.
Exactly.
So, okay.
Anything else about vehicles?
No.
Then, would you some for the-
Get some for us.
Yeah, all right. All right. But what about other department vehicles?
Amber, yeah?
Yes, Amber's here, right, is that what that's about?
Was she here?
Yeah.
Hi. Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you Amber, how's it going in your department?
Pretty good, we're busy, it's good to be busy after last year. It's exciting to see all the new developments and discussions that come on, so.
So how long have you had your online service available to the community now?
Since about April of two thousand nineteen, so we're about two and a half years.
And how's that working now?
Amazingly, everybody loves it. I've had only a few tweaks to be made and that was after input from a couple of contractors, so they found a couple of things that would be handy. But even some of our locals that are like a mile away, they do online now, they love it.
So it was my understanding that you created the software or created the programming for that? Or are you using a commercial software for that?
Didn't create it, it came as an add-on from BSNA. We already have them for the rest of the program, so it took what they had and tweaked it to make it work for us specifically.
Okay, so you added a component of BSNA that you currently use?
Correct.
I didn't know that they were to have something like that.
Yeah, they offer online permits, online inspections, that's something that's already built into our packet, but we're not doing it this time. Since COVID, I'm looking at maybe exploring that more this fall, winter when it's a little calmer, to see how we could build that into our online packet as well.
And how many inspectors do we have now?
We have two building inspectors, an electrical inspector and a plumbing mechanical, so I have four people total.
I'm sorry.
Four people total.
Four?
This is really off topic, you know, we're talking about the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were talking to her about her deferment.
No, no.
I don't mind.
Well, thank you for all that information. I won't have to ask it the next time you come in.
I wasn't doing it, very informational.
So-
I don't have that budget in front of me, I guess.
I, I was just concerned about the four-by-four cab, okay, I mean, you want the super cab. In the winter, the, you know, if he's only in two-wheel drive, there's no weight in the back of those. You know, and they really do spin, so, I mean, he's basically going to only drive in four-wheel drive. Or you're going to have to put some weight in the back of it.
I did receive a quote for that too, I was strictly looking at the numbers. I'm honestly not a very knowledgeable car person, so that wasn't something I ran by the guys when I got their input. But that's a good point, well, I should have thought of that as well.
And is, is it going to have a cab on it, you know, on the back?
No.
No?
Not from the information I sent. Yeah, but that's something I hadn't considered.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I guess both those things I'd be considered about, because lots of times things are put in there and when it's raining or snowing, it's a mess. I mean, I know from experience.
And that you might have to have sandbags.
Well, right, I mean, something that you can put in and out, you know, whether it's sandbags or whatever, just-
For weight.
Yeah, just so they don't always have to drive in four-wheel drive. So I, I would just, that, that, those are my only concerns, other than that, I think it's, I'm, I'm, I can, no, you need the vehicle.
Oh, is it in our supplemental?
I was surprised it was only one.
Oh, there's actually two, I asked for two.
Is it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, he gave me the quote, saying just one, but he said it would be per each, so I would be looking at replacing two vehicles.
Oh, okay, guess I missed that part. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sure, where, where did we see that, the request? Was it in supplementary?
Yeah, it was in, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, because as I'm searching for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's-
Oh, yeah, thank you.
A question.
Sorry about that, yes.
I know we have one other item on there, which is the capital improvement, are we going to move that to, forward to our next agenda item so that all commissioners can-
Well, we're, we're just going to continue with as we go and he understands and he's going to look at it on YouTube.
Okay.
And if he has questions, I'm sure he can talk with me.
So can I clarify, so you're suggesting, could you-
Go ahead.
Could, could she get an all-wheel drive?
It is, it, well, not in a pickup, I don't believe they do all-wheel drive. They're, they're two-wheel or four-wheel, you just shift it really easy.
But I agree, she, you've got to have that option. Holy cow.
Well, they're just additions to it, you know. I don't, I guess I must have missed it, are you asking for two Ford Ranger cabs?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I saw, I guess I just read one and I didn't realize it was for two.
Yeah, you're correct, he only gave me the quote for one and he's noting that that's the price per each, but this is very vague quote that I got.
Were they regular cabs or were you?
They're supercabs, four-by-four, so it's six, four doors and a six-foot bed.
What are we doing it to, they need, what do you need the backseat for?
We don't, so I went with the smaller one, so it doesn't have four doors, it's two and you would have an interdoor access.
But I mean, we just go with a regular cab. Is it cheaper, I don't know, sometimes it costs more for a regular cab, so I don't know.
Well, what's, what's the difference in a, just an all-terrain vehicle as opposed to a pickup, price-wise? Are pickups cheaper these days, because I know all trainings are expensive? Because I, we had this argument here when, when you weren't sitting director for that department and there, I see no reason for you to need pickup trucks in that department. So I know a lot of builders in this county and I know, we have some in the family that work in this county and they said, there's no reason for the inspection, you know, they carry their, their measuring tape and their clipboard, they don't need a pickup. And a lot of their workers come to job sites in cars. Because they, they have to have the job site open, so they're just driving through job sites in cars. And, you know, unless the job, the job foreman might have a pickup, because he's got a lot of the tools and saws and that kind of thing. So there's no real reason for the inspector to have to have a pickup. And we had that discussion here at Link some years ago.
But I thought it was because of the clearance, because almost all new homes don't have a driveway.
Unless I'm saying they do, the, the contractors get up there all the time and they're driving-
The guys in the cars are out on the road for that reason.
Well, I've worked a lot of jobs and it's like they're getting their guides to them, because they have to anyway.
Yeah.
Especially after it's raining, they'd have to be able to get to it for safety reasons and for fire.
I think I would want to know what they prefer, what works for them, you know?
For the inspectors?
Yeah.
What works for them, do they encounter that driveway issue that you talked about?
We had cars for years that were perfect, we had, what were those?
You had Pontiac Vibes, they were all wheel drive?
They, they're the first ones, they were kind of a new vehicle, we had, yeah, we used those for years. And then they had the other, then we went to the other car, period.
Yeah.
Use the gauge?
Yes, it's gauge, yeah.
It would be better gas mileage.
That's another consideration right now with the way gas prices are going. Maybe, have they indicated a preference?
Yes, when I talked to the inspectors, I mentioned, you know, options and looking for input. The request was for small trucks, something that had a higher clearance, because there was one specific vehicle that needed to have repaired onto the undercarriage for damage out at the site. That's strictly why I went with this. When I talked to the representative from Ford, I mentioned we were looking for something, not necessarily a small truck, but something that hired higher ground clearance and this is what he sent me, so I just went with what he gave me. If you want me to open that up to talk to other representatives, I went with this specific company simply because that's also what the sheriff's department uses. So I'm happy to explore other options.
I don't know, I don't have it, I don't have what you're looking at, I don't think, all we've got is, you know, under budget.
You know, going to pickup trucks, well, I mean, we could buy them this year, but we may not get them for two years too.
Right.
I mean, right now, they don't even have the chips for them, so.
Right, the quote provided, they wouldn't even be available for order until late September and he mentioned the chip issue as well, so it'd be well into next year.
I've heard eighteen months.
Yeah.
That's what I've been hearing, eighteen months.
It's just that one page there.
Twenty-three thou, twenty-four thousand.
Right.
That's not a bad price for a truck, yeah. I don't know if you can get it to cross over to that price or not, maybe not.
Except that it would be more if it's four-wheel drive. Was that a four?
That is, it's a four-by-four.
Oh, was it a four-by-four?
Yeah, it's a so, four-by-four supercab.
Per quote, per quote, that's the guy we use, through state contract bid price, that's who I set Amber up with. They, as far as Ford's, signature does all of the, McCollum, Prepp, Cowling, everything stated by, McCollum, I've got all of them.
Twenty-four?
Those through there.
Yeah, it's a good price. No. I don't, yeah.
I was shocked by that.
So, so would you go aggressively, you want one, you have two vehicles for our employees, our inspectors, our inspectors that are our employees?
Yes, correct.
Contractual, are still using their own?
We don't have any contractual inspectors.
No more contractual, all our own now.
Correct.
So you need replacement vehicles for two, or you're going to be not vehicles?
Two for right now, long-term, the other vehicles, I have a two thousand and fifteen Ford Escape and a two thousand and sixteen, perhaps in the next two to three years, looking at replacing those as well. But right now, we have two two thousand and thirteen Ford Police Interceptors that we've had for eight-plus years with the amount of repair work going into them, just looking at replacing those right now.
So how many years have you had those?
Uh, the one, both of them were purchased in two thousand and eighteen.
You've got three years out of them.
Correct.
And what do you pay for those, do you remember what they pay for us, from us?
Uh, not offhand.
I think it was eight thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Eight?
Yeah.
For all of them?
Each.
Each.
You pay for each? You paid for each.
I mean, I'm just remembering from when we talked about it and did it, but I'm pretty sure it was eight thousand it was charged for the inspections, because they paid for them out of their own money, it didn't come out of the motor pool.
Right. Right, they have to do that number.
Yeah.
So your question is, do we put, that's the line, I know you're requesting for vehicles in your?
Nine seventy, capital purchases, and the amount of forty-six, five forty-six, to be added to the five forty-two budget.
For that, we're not going to, do you have anything cheaper, I don't know, anything to keep that in the budget, then?
Yeah.
Or we'll have to go.
Yeah, but it would go into the inspections budget, the limited safety.
We leased vehicles once, too, if I remember right, but we'd probably spend at least.
Yeah, one of the escapes, I believe it was the 2015, was leased initially, the second one was bought outright.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was a lease-to-purchase.
Yes.
Yeah, it was a lease-to-purchase.
Okay.
Yep, so it was calculated, and then you just used the low-interest rate, I think you used Benzine.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Well, for now, I would, personally, for now, I would say put it in, yeah.
Right, and she can look at different vehicles if she wants to, but at least we'll put it in there, and so it's in your budget to cover it.
So it's gonna be under inspections, nine seventy?
Yep.
There's plenty of money in your budget.
In her fund balance, I'll use fund balance forward to take it.
Her fund balance forward?
And she, I ran a couple of reports, just in case there are questions. So as of twelve thirty-one twenty, which would've been part of the audit, her cash was nine hundred and nine thousand. As of June thirtieth, she's nine hundred thousand. So she's staying pretty close, income versus expenses.
Well, but it was also a slower year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
She still didn't go back, which I'm surprised.
Nope.
That's good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how much is the fund balance, or the?
Um, you know, I did bring that report, too, because her budget is estimated at eight fourteen, and so we'll add that to forty-six. So she'll be at eight fifty. And her fund balance as of June. So June thirtieth fund balance was eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So she's still maintaining.
At least one year, we're trying to achieve a year and a half.
Yes.
You're gonna have to work harder. Any other questions for Amber?
I think I asked all the questions.
Yeah.
General department overview's been answered.
I was waiting for you to get to the vehicle, but it wasn't happening.
This is a good icebreaker.
There you go, yeah. You put her at ease.
No, this is a good icebreaker.
For her first major request.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so then, we're to review capital improvement plan. Thank you for being so patient with this.
Learn to laugh, it's an interesting discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to review this document for you, and I won't go page by page, but I will tell you some of the pages I'm on and what those things cover. The biggest thing is getting to the charts of the document. So this is the proposed capital improvement program. It is a six-year document, starting twenty twenty-two, running through twenty twenty-seven. And on page one, part one overview, you have the authority, that's outlined under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which states that the planning commission shall annually prepare a capital improvements program of public structures and improvements. So that's why we do this, we work with the department heads, get their proposed projects, take it to the county planning commission, they go through a process to review all those projects and prioritize them, and then get them into a document to bring back to you. There's another section in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act that requires the planning commission to remove, review, and provide a report to you on any capital improvement projects. So for instance, when the property was purchased here, that planning commission reviewed the documents, and gave a report back to the county board on their findings, when law enforcement moved here, and then the government center moved here, did the same thing, did the same thing with towers. So that's another step that the planning commission takes on your behalf. Also on page one, it outlines what is a CIP. It's a short-range plan, generally secures, it identifies the capital projects and the purchase of equipment, provides a planning schedule, and identifies the financing options. It also outlines the benefits of a CIP. Then going on to page two, there's some bullet points there stating what CIP usually includes, which is a listing of the projects or equipment, the projects ranked in the order of preference, financing, a timetable for construction or completion, justification for projects, and explanation of the expenses for each project. Page three gives you some examples of some CIP projects, such as bikeways, bridges, parks, fire stations, street improvements and buildings, and also notes that not every project is a CIP. Some of them are maintenance, or they're supportive of day-to-day operations, so it's entirely up to you as to what you want in the CIP. Some counties are very specific, and go down to the nitty-gritty of what they put in their CIP, but it's supposed to be more of big projects, big developments. Then we get into the process of implementation, just real quickly under the process, our department sends out a form, which is at the end of this document, it's something that you approved a couple of years ago, and we've used it every year since then. So it goes out to the department heads early in the year to complete it, it gets, it comes back to me, we put all that together, and then send those out to the planning commission with the forms to rank them. They go through a process of ranking them, and then we put them into this document, make any other changes that are necessary for the document, and then bring it to you for a report.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that for me about the ranking?
Yeah, the ranking, I actually have one of the pages here for it. The ranking is a chart, which we use. This is, I don't know how well you can see that, but it's kind of, it's a long spreadsheet. We put the projects out across the top, each planning commission member goes through, and there's a series of questions, they give them points, so one of the categories is insurance, ensuring public safety and health. So if it is a project that's gonna take care of an issue that's endangering public health, that's gonna rank much higher than, say, an improvement to a park. And then there's categories for financing, goals and objectives, and so forth. So all of those are numbered, and then we collectively put those all together to figure out what the ranking is.
Sure.
I'm just wondering about this list here, and they put bikeways, that's number one?
That's not in our, our CIP, those are just examples.
I know, but why bikeways number one? To me, it shouldn't even probably be on the list as a capital improvement.
Well, they probably should be just bullet points, it's not like it's a number one category.
I know that, but it doesn't even fit in that list when I look at the other things.
Would you like that deleted?
And bridges.
I'd feel much better about it.
Bridges.
Actually, a lot of people get seriously hurt on their bikes, so maybe that's a safety issue. I have two friends who have had.
But then we should eliminate bikeways completely.
That's right.
Another reason.
I broke my pelvis on a damn bike.
Should, should I, Mom?
How about I shorten that list a little bit?
Sorry, I'm just.
I can shorten that and just bullet point.
Driving lane, so.
Yeah, yeah, bikes, it's dangerous.
One of the other things I wanted to point out in here is that the CIP includes language in that section, that even though a project is listed in here, a department head still has to go through all the policies and procedures, so they have to go through a bid process, they have to bring it back to you, they have to make sure that the financing is set up, and they get approval before they move forward with the project. So that's specifically in here, so department heads don't feel like, oh, the CIP got approved, I got my project in there, I can go ahead and do what I want. But, no, they still have to go through the process. Then on pages four and five, it provides some information on the organizational structure of the county and some demographics. It also includes evaluation process for the projects, and then going on to page six, we talk about the project ranking again. So just to go back to that quickly, if it's ranked as a one, it means it's urgent, such as correcting a danger to public health and safety, or it satisfies a legal obligation. Two, it means it's important, and ranking as three is the lowest ranking, it means it's desirable, but if we don't do it, it's not gonna have a detriment to any of our current services. So it's kind of like, yeah, it's nice to do it, but we don't have to do it. That's followed up by definitions that we use in the CIP, and information on the different types of financing. These are financing options that I reviewed with the county treasurer a couple of years ago, and then I always send out a draft of this to all the department heads to review before it comes to you, to make sure that we still have proper information in here. Page nine, then starts part two, the existing capital facility inventory. So it starts with a printout from Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, or MMRA. This lists all of our buildings and properties, and the insured value that MMRA lists for the county. After that, you get a map showing the county tower sites, followed by an explanation of each one of those sites in the contracts. And Matt Ann Sorgi is really good about giving me this information every year, I just shoot him these pages and ask him to update me with the newest information, and he'll go through and clean up everything, and then just send it back. So this is the most up-to-date information on all your towers. And then that is followed by the three parks for the county, and then the recycling site locations. Then we get into the next section, which is the recommended projects, and these are the charts. So the first thing you'll see is a summary chart of projects, and that is several pages, starting on page twenty-two of your document. It lists twenty-three projects, and some of these date back to two thousand and sixteen. So those earlier projects either need to continue to carry forward after this six-year time period, or you need to make a determination next year of whether they should be dropped from the CIP or not, because they've been hanging around here for six years, so are you gonna fund them or not? That will be a determination that you can make next year. So on the left-hand side is the item number, the first part of it, two thousand sixteen dash oh-two, that means it started in two thousand sixteen, it was the second project that year. Then you have the project title, the priority group, again, the one is the highest, the location of where this project would be at, the department that submitted it, an approximate start and end time, followed by a project summary and the needs that it would fulfill, an approximate cost, which was given to us by the department heads, and then potential funding sources for each one of these. Some of them are grant-funded, some of them are general fund, or perhaps a computer fund, some of them might have private donations, or come from the capital improvement fund.
Trudy, a quick question.
Yes.
When you send it out for review to the departments, are the approximate costs updated, if there has been a change, or do they remain the same as when they were input? For example, the first one on the list was started in twenty, two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, that particular one only changed by five thousand dollars from what I had originally received.
So it does get updated?
Yeah, if the department had to have newer information, they'll give that to me, and then we put it in here.
Thanks.
So this goes on for a couple pages for you, and then you get to the bottom of page twenty-five, and you'll see that the total estimated cost, the high end of all of these projects, is six million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The following page is our estimate on how these projects could be broken out over the next four years. We didn't take them into the last two years of this six-year plan, trying to look at, when would these be funded? Would they be funded starting in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three? And again, we take that information from what the department heads have submitted to us, as to when they think the project would start, and then when it would end. So you can see the brunt of the financing is in the first two years, with two million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand next year, followed by just over three million, six hundred and forty thousand in twenty twenty-three. Now, I did send John an email, and I said, John, take a look at this chart, and all these dollars, what do we have for funding if, for some reason, the county board looked at this and said, you know, well, how would we fund all of these projects, where's the money? And his response back was that we do not have that kind of funding to fund all of these projects. I'm just gonna read from this email here a little bit. For instance, parks do not have revenue, so it would be the general fund for their projects. The capital projects fund does not have revenue, but we will get money transferred in by the DTR or the general fund. And then the tower, motor pool, data processing, and computer fund do, excuse me, do have some revenues. And then the final part is recommendations, part four, and a lot of these you have already done. For instance, every year, you adopt the CIP, you continue funding maintenance for existing facilities, you look at different revenue on properties, the county departments submit their proposed projects, we continue to update the CIP for you, and explore options and means of making the county facilities more efficient, to try to keep those costs down. And then following that is the, just the copy, so that you can see it again, of the submitter form that all of the departments use. I have all of these in my office for all of the projects that have been submitted, we don't attach them to this document because it'd be very lengthy, but we do have all of that backup information, if anyone ever wanted to see it. So as we've done in the past, I look to you to see if you have any questions, or comments, or changes for the plan, and then, once we get through that process, if you are satisfied with the plan, or want changes, and then brought back to you, then it's up to you if you want to adopt the plan.
Just outside and looking through it, I don't remember scoring many projects, but so many of them are just twos, so we just gave them, I believe it was important, but maybe not for, whatever they want, but.
Yes, and actually, in response to your comment, Commissioner Lotner, when you had your first budget meeting, I looked at the memo that you had received from the administrator, and I saw projects on there, and I said, I don't have these projects in my CIP, they did not come to me from the department heads. So I then reached back out to those department heads and said, what are these, you didn't submit them to me, that, you know, they thought they had, because they'd submitted some other ones. So that's why you ended up getting a few more of these, like, from the computer fund that got put in here. But they're still ranked at a lower ranking.
Well, I honestly think it could even be more helpful to us all if we went back through them, and maybe all of them hit our twos, and do an A, B, and C, perhaps. So, you know, because, you know, we might say, okay, you got, I'm just gonna start right here at the top, the first one, this number two, is the security fencing and electric gate for law enforcement center, we've got that as, yeah, important. Well, we have it in, under important, is it super-important, important, or not that important, you know, and reevaluate each thing? Because otherwise, I don't know where we're gonna, how we're gonna prioritize that many important things.
And that example that you bring up begs the question of, that's been a proposed project since two thousand and sixteen, do you really want to do it?
Right.
If not, maybe it should come off, you know, or next year?
Well, we've got equipment, you know, for county parks, we got, that's important. Existing equipment, I guess it would be playground equipment? And I know that, some of that might come to us next year, but, I don't know, just a thought.
Commissioner Alba.
So from what you said, so I noticed that the two number ones were patrol vehicles, which I think you need it, you need that, I can absolutely see that. It's also the sheriff's boat request. From what you said in terms of criteria you gave to the planning commission when they ranked, it would improve public safety, so I can see that a boat, that qualifies there, but that's also a whole lot of money and a whole lot of other issues. So the one is just because it's been on there two sixteen, and it's a public safety thing?
It's because of the way it ranked when it was done by the planning commission. That doesn't mean that you can't change it, this is a draft that comes to the county board. board. If you're not happy with that, and you feel like something else should be ranked as a number one, and it's a project that you want to consider ahead of anything else, you have the right to change that at any time. So this is a draft coming before you.
Okay. So how locked in are we to these rankings? I mean, we can change them, but...
We can eliminate them.
This is a...
We can eliminate number one if we want. I guess Commissioner Soudas-Little.
Trudy, how much in the ranking system? How much consideration is given, how much consideration is given to the department's request and where they are ranking it in terms of their own priorities versus other factors or other parameters that are being considered in the ranking?
The department head doesn't rank the project when it comes to, I mean, they'll tell us that this is really important, or I need it for these three reasons, something like that. They don't do a ranking like we do with the planning commission. So we take it through, these are the categories. Ensuring, public health, public safety and health, consistency with goals and objectives, which may be through department goals and objectives or adopted plans, cost and benefit considerations, coordination of investments, if you're coordinating the cost with other agencies, so bring that down, and then the funding. Where the priority really is used when you're talking about CIPs is if you have a limited budget, and you are torn between projects that need to be done, you can fall back on this, and you can fall back on the ranking, you know, depending on how you decide it should be ranked, and say, we can only do one project this year, and this is the project it's going to be. Everything else is going to hold off.
So when the department submit, since they aren't ranking, but if they are, with their transmittal letter, they say this is really important, does the planning commission see that documentation before they, as a part of their ranking?
Yes, they get these.
Commissioner.
I would like to point out on page 22, at the bottom of the page, the Leland Dam.
I was just going to ask about that.
The control room. So on this particular sheet, they've got $11,000 for that, the seal the road. However, they came before us today and are requesting additional funds for something that they're calling a safety issue. And I was very disappointed to see them before the board today and not seeing that particular project included on this CIP plan. The other thing, according to your ranking, urgent, public health and safety, as Commissioner Alguier said, the patrol boat listed as a number one for that reason. And you made the comment, that's a lot of money. Well, when I go down here and look at Miles Kimberly Park, or Veronica Valley's Park, or the county parks, you have $540,000 to put in whatever. Okay? It's a nice amenity for our county. However, when we're ranking these, and we're talking about public health and safety, which has a higher importance. So even though you'd like to see the boat come off, I would like to see the boat stay on. If there's an opportunity for a grant, then I would like to see that opportunity made available.
Commissioner Aldey.
I'm just thinking...
You know, I think the boat is a wonderful idea. I would love to see a grant. We just spoke about wanting to put more money into MERS for a couple of years. That's a large chunk. One thing about the boat is you start with the price of the boat, and then you've got to insure it, and then you've got to hire somebody to run it, and then you've got safety. It's, that's just to go through the gate. So that's a lot of money. So, boy, it would be great if we got a grant.
Well, I think the sheriff has made his point in his report on the area that he's responsible. He's mandated to oversee those waters. And it's my understanding that we have more and more ships and boats that come into this area that are much larger. You saw them down in our bay last month, you know, and thank God we have not had more kayakers. Yeah, a catastrophic event where you have got, or even a plane crash, where you've got 150 passengers that are in the water, or something like that. It's going to take all the resources that we have from all of our agencies when you have a disaster.
Do you have a boat on each side of the peninsula? Because it would take one hour to get over there.
I'm talking about your Coast Guard and all your major response. When you have a catastrophe like that, you're going to pull your resources from all of those agencies, not just one.
For sure.
But, so, yeah. I still feel that we as a board need to keep that in mind and consider this over time. Granted, we don't have $495,000 to put out there for a boat, but we don't know what the future may bring. So. And so, getting back to the Leland Dam, you know, I feel like we're somewhat handicapped because we don't have a long-range, you know, you're talking a six-year plan here, but it seems like they keep coming back to this board for this, that, and the other thing. Was that been addressed with them, or they just didn't come forward with their needs, long-term needs?
I can't speak to what they brought before you today as to what they were asking for. I reminded the department head several times as we started in the beginning of the year, send the forms out, I'll send them out a couple times, saying, I need your request, I need your projects given in. Seems like almost every year, something gets overlooked, and it's like, oops, I forgot to give that to you. Well, CIP's done already. The board already adopted it. So trying to continue to get that in the department head's mind that you need to get it in here, because this is the big picture for all of you to look at to say, wow, here's what we have in the future that we know of. What else might be coming along, like maintenance issues or so forth? But this gives you a picture rather than operating like you did, the board did, years ago without ever seeing this. And it was just one at a time, coming before you through the year. At least now, you can look at this and say, this is what we're kind of expecting to come before us over the next year or so with these approximate costs. The costs will change as they go out for bids or quotes, may go up, may go down, but it gives you at least a starting point.
Gives us that long-range picture, and I want to thank you for all the work and the team that's worked with you on this.
Sure.
Because I do know it takes a lot of time, and sometimes you've got to have a cattle prod.
Yeah. And it's not a perfect document. It's a working document. It's going to change every year. By the time it gets adopted, there may be a project comes along later this fall that nobody thought of, and it's not in the CIP yet, you know? I mean, that happens.
Or something breaks.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess I am a little concerned about the parks, you know? I mean, they're talking, their budget's $100,000, or what, maybe it's $150,000 now? And they're talking spending, you know, $200,000 or more a year on their parks. I mean, they mentioned two here at $150,000 each year, but it doesn't include the other two at all. So, I mean, are they talking about raising that budget? Is this budget changed to $300,000 now?
A lot of those are expected to be grants or donations.
Yeah, okay. Well, and that's the same thing.
One is probably still...
They're talking about the dam. I mean, do we add in, we know it's going to be $40,000 a year for the next 10 years? You know, that's the minimum cost, or not minimum, but the maximum, I guess that they thought it was going to be, or don't we, because it's already set?
And so question for general budget, I think we only budget $10,000 for the dam delivery?
I increased it to 11,1. It used to be 8100.
All right. So we've already had that overview discussion problem, and that's just not an option. That's why it's going to be put in the CIP.
Chairman, when you budgeted that 11,1, is that strictly for utilities?
Yes, and I added...
Inspection?
I added contractual services, and then I think I may have increased his repair and maintenance, and then that's when Steve was placed on the agenda, because if they're looking at more of a repair than just a couple thousand in repair and maintenance, then that needs to be adjusted. And so that's when he, we stated earlier during the regular executive, that I'll need, we'll need to talk about that here when you get to the funds. But I believe it's 11,1.
And would you tell me where you're at in the book?
Absolutely. If you want to follow where I'm at in the book, it's under special funds. It's a tab on its own.
Commissioner Soudas-Little had a question.
Well, more of a comment. I think what our chairman was referring to is what we were talking about earlier, that there, when the drain commission brought forward a 10-year plan of so much, and an identification of what that was covered per year, and a price tag of $40,000 per year. So, which would be different than what their annual operating budget is.
Correct.
So I think the question is, to Trudy, that if the capital improvement plan, I guess because it had been agreed to as an ongoing priority for the next 10 years, should it be, so that we can, you know, as Commissioner Rushton said, so we see it?
So you're saying that they project $40,000 in some kind of repairs or improvements every year for the next 10 years?
Ten years, yes.
$400,000?
And that was approved by this board.
Yes.
That's a big ticket item. It could be classified as maintenance, but it doesn't have to be. You could put it in this document.
They didn't identify what it was for over the heat year. They broke out what had to be done.
I have not seen that.
Yeah. Well, we'll see if you get it.
Well, I mean, thank you for explaining that better than I did. Yeah, you know, it was, you know, the pins and the systems demanded from OSHA. And that was, the engineer estimated it'd be $400,000 over a 10-year period.
Okay.
And some of it was more immediate, you know, and some of it was later on. But that's what was, I thought we were going to put $40,000 into that budget on a regular basis to try to cover their expenses. And they were supposed to, you know, so they had a budget, and that's when we talked about having a special assessment district to cover those costs, you know? And some of them seemed a little high, and we talked about at least $20,000 a year, but it would be between 20 and 40. And, I mean, at least this year and last year, I believe, we were near, we were near the $20,000, I think, last year, or a little more.
Right. So last year's expenses audited were $35,000.
Yeah.
And your budgeted this year is 49,1. And when Steve turned in his budget, he didn't make any changes, so he rolled the 49,1. And that's when I told him I rolled it back to contractual, I added repair and maintenance, I added 2,600. So I rolled it back to prior to capital improvements, because there was nothing given to me to state what that extra $38,000 was going to be spent on.
Okay.
So if they have a plan for that money, then, like you're saying in this plan, then it needs to get, and it should have been written in here and given to you in your supplemental as to what it was, so that it could be...
We don't have a schedule, we don't have a budget, we don't have a plan for that dam. This is what it makes me so upset about, them keep dropping in front of us while we need another 12 here, and we're going to need another $5,000. Now we have a flooding problem, so we're going to need another $6,000. There's, it's maintenance that's being done, and then they have to be, they have to send the diver under every once in a while, and they'll drop that on us. We need a full-out plan for that dam for the future, and, I'll say it again, we need to get 50% matching from the criteria for it, so that we can set up a budget and have the money to take care of the dam as we should.
That's the fund number.
It's the last one. It's 805, so it's page 77.
That was the discussion we had, and...
And I know, and I lost that argument then, and I'm saying it again, we need to revisit it, because they're keep picking away at it.
But to set up the SAD was going to cost almost that much a year.
Well...
That was part of the big argument.
We already have the SAD set up. We had an estimate thrown out there. We had it set up once. We need to look at it again, and all we need to do is make adjustments to it.
They brought documentation. I think it's best, they brought documentation. I think it's best to go back to the documents, review it before we discuss this again.
Well, and all we have to do is add the splits that have happened to it, and it doesn't have to be that much. I think we just didn't want to do it. But that's also when it was one project that was just going to be a few thousand dollars, and, yeah, it wasn't worth it. But it's clearly going to be a bigger issue.
Yes, clearly. So, anyway, I'm disappointed that it's not in there. That's not your fault, okay?
Well, I have down here two changes that I heard, was to shorten up that one bullet list on the pages for examples for projects, and then get this information in here on the dam, as far as, you know, what are we looking at? It may not be exact numbers, but at least it will be in here.
Commissioner Aldey.
Was there any other changes?
Any chance that Communication Tower 911 thing could come out of our park? I wonder.
What page are you, are you on the chart?
Yes, Communication Tower Government Center, the first page of the chart, last item.
That most likely will come out if you make that decision, because from the minutes that were mailed out from June 23rd, new state project one and project two are for Chuck and Matt to go ahead with.
Yeah.
So that one's out.
KRP.
Under our...
Okay, good.
So I'm confused. Does that have anything to do with the CIP?
It will.
It's this item on the CIP.
It's just how it's funded. Those projects are going to go forward. It's just how it's going to be funded.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, and that's another issue. You know, the boat might be funded under that programming, you know?
The dam might be as well.
Well, it's public safety, is it not?
It's considered infrastructure.
Right.
Really? Infrastructure?
Just like roads.
Okay.
And if we have any other suggestions, we're supposed to bring those forward to you in a timely manner?
Yes. Do you want this on your agenda for next Tuesday night? Do you want a clean copy? Or you want it for a different meeting?
Is it weak enough for you to look at it and make, you know, but then she would have to get the changes by that time?
Yeah.
Yeah, how long do you need?
You should adopt this before you adopt your budget for 2022.
Okay. So can we put it on next month?
Sure.
Would that be all right? That gives us a week or two to get you any changes that are...
Okay.
Because I really haven't had to.
Okay. All right.
So maybe we'll get infrastructure money, if you'd be more...
Correct.
Later.
All right. So then that brings us to future budget work dates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Soudas-Little, you talked about the 30th?
Right, the 30th is the, I've made changes on the other two, so I can attend the other one, but not the 30th.
Okay. So we have to change the 30th and look for a different day? We'll probably have to do that Tuesday, because Commissioner Wessel's not here. We're going to try to all get together and be there for the sessions. So, but we do know the 12th will be here.
Yes.
And that's when we'll do that again, and then we're all set for the 18th.
Right.
Are you not available all day?
They're going to be eliminated.
Patricia, or you're just not available in the morning?
It'd be kind of, I'd say, all day.
Pardon me?
I'd say all day.
I will, thank you.
And she's already missed one. All right. Is there any other questions or things? So then that would bring us to public comment. Seeing non-commissioner comment. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.